I'd like to ask, I'd like to start this meeting by asking for a moment of silence for our Springfield student who passed away today. Our condolences, our thoughts and our prayers go out to the family and to all of the Springfield community members who have been impacted by this loss. Please know that supports are available in person and virtually, and I will ask Dr. Gooden to talk about those supports during his superintendent report this evening. We did have an executive session tonight prior to the start of this meeting to discuss personnel. I think many of you know that regarding in-person attendance, we shall not exceed 168 attendees. All will be socially distanced, six feet apart, and with masks required and to be worn properly at all times. Regarding public comment, over the last few weeks or months, I will say, there have been many heated debates and accusations have been made against many who are working so hard to safely return our children to school. Tonight and going forward, let's all strive together to be respectful of others. And so regarding public comment, each commenter will have three minutes. There will be no cap. At the beginning of the meeting, it will be based on agenda items only, and there will be an open forum at the close of the meeting. I will ask the board to revisit a cap if public comments run more than one hour at each time. And I will do my best to balance the time, allot it for comments from people inside here with us tonight and by those that are on Zoom. And that's it for my announcements this evening. Ishika, do you have any announcements for us?
Yes, I have one announcement. The Interact Club is holding a community food drive during homecoming week. Drive-by and drop-off non-perishable food items on October 21st to be donated to Project Outreach right here in our Springfield community. This is an easy way to make a big impact in our Springfield community. Visit the high school webpage for more information on this food drive and all details about the 2020 homecoming plans.
Okay, thank you for that.
Colleen, how many, how many people are on Zoom?
Ms. Crew, how many people are on tonight? 140? Is that YouTube and Zoom?
We have a lot of open seats here.
We do, and I do, I am happy to see people here, though.
I just want to make one, one additional announcement. I just want to be, for the record, be clear as far as what happened Friday night at the home football game. Because there's, like everything else, there's what really happened and what people perceive is happening. Last, last week, per the governor's orders, he came out, Governor Wolf came out and increased the capacity, seatings for outdoor arenas. Just hang one second here. The, it was zero to 2,000 seats. You could have 20% seating capacities, 2,000 to 10,000, you got 15%, and so on and so on. Over 10,000, it was 10%. So what we did here at Springfield is we took, there was a, within the order itself, there was the help figure out your capacity seating. You could take your square footage and basically, per your square footage, for every thousand square feet, you're allowed 67 people into the, into the stadium. I know Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Rizzo, I believe Mr. Rigner all worked very hard and diligently to come up with a number of how many participants would be able to come into the stadium. We actually, based on the calculations, not including the participants on the field, came up with somewhere around 1400 to 1500, I believe it was, Mr. Rizzo. And, but it was decided that we would stay at 1,200 to be more conservative, especially for the first week of allowing additional capacity into the, into the stadium. Based on all that, again, we, we followed, strictly followed very closely the, the requirements set forth by Governor Wolf. Part of that as well is that we had to send our health and safety plan to the county, which we did. We also found out when we sent it, they didn't agree with it because it wasn't in their format, so we had to put it in their format and resend it, although none of the information changed. And we didn't even know that there was a format that existed. But again, Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Rizzo and whoever else, I don't want to keep repeating names, worked extremely hard and quickly to get this information to the county. The county then decided that they didn't agree with our approach. They, they wanted an occupancy limit. The stadium was built in the mid, late 60s. There wouldn't be one on file, and that's why we followed exactly what's said in Governor Wolf's orders when it came to square footage. We then told the county that if you want, we contacted Limerick Township, and they sent their code office over quickly to help us to provide whatever the county wanted. So we continued to follow everybody's requests to the T, but at a certain point, the county then decided that they were only going to allow 918 people in the stadium, including participants. So, and there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of arguing, and we even showed in the order, Governor Wolf's order, following exactly what we did. And they just said that, nope, we're giving you 918 and we're going to enforce it, which then put us in a situation, because no one saw this coming and no one would have expected to come, because, as I keep saying, we followed Governor Wolf's order to the T. And based on that, we then had to turn away 700 parents that already had tickets. We also had to doubt tell Upper Perp that their parents were not allowed to come to the stadium to watch their players participate in the very exciting football game as well. And on top of it all, to try to make things work, and again, I, I applaud Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Rizzo, and whoever else, I believe, Mr. Rigner, and maybe Dr. Collier was involved, whoever was involved, I applaud all their efforts trying to make this work. But in the 23rd hour, we had to make a decision, and the decision was to try to pull this game off. We then had asked the band, and I do not support this, but it had to be done, but we asked the band to basically come in at four o'clock. They could practice till five o'clock. The band parents could come and watch the band perform at five o'clock for them. And then we told them they had to leave. And there was tickets, still some tickets available if, if they wanted to stay, but unfortunately, I think at that point, that a lot of people were very upset. And first off, you know, I, I want to apologize to the band, the band students, the band parents, the, all, everyone associated with the band that this had to happen, but I also want to applaud them for, for them stepping up and agreeing to something in such a short notice. There were a lot of people that were extremely upset, rightfully so, but this district and this school board did absolutely nothing wrong. We did absolutely nothing inappropriate. We followed Governor Wolf's mandate to the T, and we were conservative in our numbers for the stadium. It was Montgomery County who made the decision, and that was through the chairman of Valar Koosh and Michelle, whatever her name was, huh? McMasters? Michelle Masters that works for the Department of Health. They made the decision, and no matter how we tried and how much we communicated, their answer back to stupid M.A.S., their answer back to us was, we don't care, you're limited to 918, and that's it. So it was very depressing for a lot of people, very upsetting, and, and I would hope that if we're going to move forward, Mr. Fitzgerald, I want to ask you, from a legal perspective, is there something that we can do through filing an injunction or whatever that overrides the county with their non-supported documented, whatever you want to call it, that was a complete contradiction of what we're allowed to do by Governor Wolf?
Certainly you, as a board, can decide if you would want to respond to the county that their direction usurped, A, the governor's order, but B, and this is probably more important, is that to the extent that they wanted to limit crowd sizes or reduce it lower than the governor's order, they would have had to have done so through rulemaking process with the county commissioners and not utilizing provisions of their health code, which, from our perspective, was likely not applicable to how they instituted crowd size limits last week. So that is certainly something that can be done. Obviously, I don't think you have a home game this week.
Oh, we do.
You do, you have a home game this week?
Yeah.
Okay. So this would be something that would have to go out to them immediately this week tomorrow, advising them of our concern about this. It may not change their position ultimately. They, they may continue to say that we have the authority to do it, and then we'd have to decide whether we want to explore some sort of injunctive relief.
So, Mr. Fitzgerald, when you say "we," that would come from you?
No, that would have to come from you as a board. I, I, it would be, it would, that would be the direction of the board to explore injunctive relief to their, to their orders within the county. I would want that direction from you. I wouldn't want it, I, I wouldn't do it without that authority.
Do we need to have a motion to give that to you, or do we give that to you as agreement?
This is where I typically say we, we might want to exploit this discussion in executive session.
Okay, well, thank you for that announcement.
Well, that's not going to help us if the game is Friday.
If we have an executive session after this meeting to discuss that and then give direction to Mr. Fitzgerald, whatever we need to do, we cannot let that happen again.
As, as your legal counsel, not necessarily, but if you, you can give it to me if you want publicly. I don't think it needs to be an official vote, I just need to know that I'm acting on, on behalf of, of my client.
So we can have exec session and give you directive?
Sure.
Move forward with?
With regard to potential injunction? Potential litigation, absolutely.
Okay, I just, I'm, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I thought the Eagles were playing tonight, so I'm sorry.
They lost.
I know. That's my point.
I'm going to move on now to then, to public to be heard on agenda items only.
Well, are we calling an exec session regarding this or not? I just want to know where we're at with this topic.
I believe we're going to meet in, or is it, does everyone, everyone agree to meet an executive session after this meeting to discuss what it is we're going to do here? Right. I have, do I have heads down there? Okay, then that's what we're going to do.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on then, again, to public to be heard on agenda items only, we'll start with any agenda items only, please, in here, and then there will be an opportunity, as I said, at the end where it's an open forum. Okay, Mr. Olson, do you have something related to our agenda?
Two and four E. Roland Olson, 711 Sowerwood Lane. We need to move faster. We need to get the kids back in school sooner than a month from now. We need to get the events for homecoming scheduled and announced so the kids and families have them to look forward to. It is safe and legal to do so. What is the delay? I received an email from Dr. Collier to quote, "We have some plans for homecoming and other typical events such as Powderpuff that occur the week of homecoming would be revisited for implementation."
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt, and I, I definitely want to hear what you have to say. I just, I'm trying to...
It should be the extracurriculars.
Under extracurricular?
Yeah.
Okay, let's...
All right, keep going.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. "That occur the week of homecoming would be revisited for implementation, and this is still the case." End quote. What is standing in the way? The attendance restrictions have been greatly lessened. Thanks to our many Springfield teams for showing the way as players, coaches and trainers, the ability to play sports this fall has been shown to be safe. The Powderpuff game in particular itself is important, not because any of you or I will participate in it, but because it is a worthy tradition at Springfield, which many of our kids look forward to participating in. There is no reason it cannot be held in the near future. If you need volunteers, I will find them. If we need a field to host it, I will get one. If we need footballs or t-shirts, we got it. The kids have done nothing wrong. When you vote against these events, you're voting against these kids. They deserve to have these events. They need to have these events because these are the things they will remember. To not do them now is wrong. Please start moving faster and better. Our kids need you to. We have so far been the school district of can't. Please change that to can. Why? Because we can and we should. Further, I fully endorse the district fighting back versus the county on behalf of our rights, and I hope the executive session deems the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in this room on agenda items only? Are there any hands raised on the Zoom?
There are no hands raised. There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, there are no hands raised, so we're going to go over to board and committee reports. And with that, Mr. Schaefer on extracurricular?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. DeBella, thanks for bringing that up in announcements because that saved me a little bit of chatter. The Extracurricular Committee met on Tuesday, October the 6th. Meeting was called to order at 6:31. The minutes from September the 1st were approved. Mr. McDaniel started off by presenting the high school sports participation tallies. I'll just summarize by saying that overall, the district compared to, from, from a high school perspective, compared to just pure participation numbers from last school year to this school year with fall sports, is, we're down a net 30. So all things considered, I think that's reasonable and not concerning, with the boys' activities down a net of 28, and the girls' activities down a net of two. So we have a total of 439 students involved with extracurricular sports. Mr. Rigner presented...
Is that number of people, Dave? Number of kids or percentage? What are, what's net?
I'm sorry, yeah, number of participant students. Yep. Mr. Rigner presented then on high school clubs and activities. And again, these notes will be, I'm reading what I typed up here, so they'll be provided to you for your review. As of October the 1st, there are 515 students, grades nine through 12, that are signed up to participate in clubs. Six clubs are being offered virtually for the fall. Five more clubs will be starting up in November when students are returning. October the 6th marks, marked the day of our first in-school chorus and orchestra practice sessions. October the 24th, marching band parent night slash senior recognition is happening at 5:30 PM. As Ishika mentioned, the October 19th through the 23rd is Fall Spirit Week. Theme dress-up days taking part throughout the week for students and teachers in their virtual classrooms. Some of the themes are Team Day, Tie-Dye Day, Superhero, Rockstar, Celebrity Day, and Decades Day. On the 21st of that week, the Interact Club is sponsoring the food drive. Students and staff are encouraged to drive by, drive and, drive by and drop off non-perishable food donations in front of the 1012 center. On Saturday, October 24th, the Homecoming Court recognition will take place during the halftime of a boys' soccer game versus Methactin. That game is scheduled for 10 AM. In February or March, more of the traditional homecoming week celebrations will take place in person, excuse me, and more of that information will follow. I'll pause there if anybody has any questions on the activities. I rattled through them pretty quickly. All right. In other business...
I guess I, I do have one question.
I'm sorry, time was up on that. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I, I'd like to go back and visit about the Homecoming Court at the soccer game. I'd also like to reference what Mr. Olson commented on about the homecoming, and I also have reviewed what Methactin is doing at the Oaks Drive-In. I, I know that we're not them, but I, I would love to see with the restrictions having been lessened, that we take a second look at what we're doing with those activities and, and see what we can add to it. So much has been lost, and now that the restrictions have been lessened, we need to do what we can to engage more students and, and bring us back to the Springfield community that we are.
So, I mean, I, I can't speak on, obviously, that's in administration. Dr. Collier, do you want to comment on that, or is there any, anybody that would like to comment on that, or is it just...
I just want to know what we can do. What, what is it that we can do? There's so much that has been lost. Frankly, I'm tired of the loss. What can we do? I know that it's, that it's, that it's planned. I'd like to see what we can add to it. We need to enhance it.
I, I agree. Again, sort of from a committee standpoint, I, I don't have the authority to say yes or no. So for, Dr. Gooden, or would anyone from administration like to comment on that?
I believe Mr. Dr. Collier has laid out a fairly detailed proposal of when he wants to do things and when he can do things. And at this point right now, when the discussion that's happening, if the board wants something different, you need to direct us to do something different.
I, I'd like to put it out there. I'd like to ask administration to look at what is scheduled and what is planned, and in light of the lessening of restrictions, what more can be done to enhance the activities? Not to the point of jeopardize, not to the point of not being safe, not to the point of not abiding by the regulations that are out there and the mandates that are out there, but is there something more we can do in light of the fact that the restrictions have been lessened? Doesn't seem like it's a popular opinion at this table, but I would like to hear from the rest of the board.
I mean, I, I commit, I have a senior. I commiserate with a lot of these things, but I feel as a board, we need to really be concentrating on getting the children back in school. And I think that we should be looking at the big obstacles and the big picture, and I think this, not that I consider this to be small, but these type of issues should be left to the administration, the principals, and I think that they have the expertise to handle them, and I believe that we should let that and not micromanage the smaller stuff. That's just my personal opinion.
All right, so just continuing with...
I just, I'm sorry. I was waiting for calling the... No, I, I, I kind of agree with what you're saying, but is there anything more specific? I mean, I don't like saying, I just like them to revisit, or what else can we do? Do you have a recommendation? Is there something you're thinking? Is there something you want to put forward? I mean, is there, where do you want to go with it? I mean, I, I just want to understand where you're coming from.
Okay, so, so with the tailgate, for example, I backed off of that because there, we weren't allowed to have those size of the numbers, and, and I know I had said something about it, but then I, I backed down and I understood that, and I asked to wait until we could have the numbers. And, and I was assured, Dr. Collier had said, that when the kids go back to school. So now I'm, I'm thinking that may play out for November 12th, even though only half of them will be going back. Okay, we'll do that then. But as, as far as homecoming, there are some creative ideas out there. Where are we, I mean, it's, I don't want the kids sitting in their living rooms watching Homecoming Court on TV. Is there a way that, that we can do it where, I, I, I think I've heard that Methactin's using Oaks Drive-In, and they're going to broadcast it, and they're going to do a senior slideshow, and they're going to have a car decorating contest, and the kids can't be out of their cars and congregating altogether, but they are in all in one place to do that. And, and I don't want to micromanage. I do hear what you're saying, Mrs. Fazini, but I also think we've created a plan, and the next step on getting them back is the hybrid plan. In, in light of, and, and just, it, I just want to further engage, and I want to salvage what we can of the rest of this year. If I can help with that, if we have an, an army of volunteers that are out there that can help with that, we need to be doing that. We need to be doing what we can to still make this a, a good year. And, yeah, so that would be, that's where I'm coming from on that.
When's Powderpuff Bowl?
I don't believe that that's scheduled. That's another example. If we're playing football, why can't we do the Powderpuff?
So...
I mean, that's fine if somebody wants to be in charge of having a safety plan for that. It needs a safety plan, a safe, public safety and health plan, just like every other activity that we're doing.
Absolutely. I don't want to jeopardize the safety at all. Get whatever we need to get in place, but I also don't want to just shelve these things to a point where we can have them if, now that the restrictions have been lessened, that we can't. I've never been an advocate for putting something on a shelf if we're able to do it. I mean, I'm a, I'm a rule follower. I will say that. If the rules are out there, I'm a rule follower. That's just who I am. But I will say that if they've changed...
Well, I think it's important...
That's unfair.
That we are demonstrating as a board that we are supportive of anything that the administration would put best, but I, I put by, but I tend to agree, agree with Mrs. Fazini. This is the administrative, administration's responsibility with like the parent groups to come up with something, and knowing that if they appropriately plan it with, you know, have a safety plan in place, that the board would be supportive of that.
Okay, hang on. But Dr. Collier is at the microphone at the podium. If you can comment and clarify for us what is happening, or maybe talk to us about potentially what could be done, I would really appreciate that.
I appreciate that. As, as a lot of the comments and questions in regards to activities, student activities have been asked and posed. Those are the conversations we're having internally, and we've had since the summer, and they continue to be ongoing in terms of being able to plan effectively and coordinate these types of events. I think recognizing the, the dynamics that impacted Friday's football game, for example, has made it very difficult to effectively plan and coordinate events. I have certainly left the door open for all events in regards to the, what and when we can coordinate and, and plan these events. I do appreciate your support with regards to moving forward with, with events that we can get together, in regards to Homecoming Court and the Homecoming Soccer Game that we have planned. We recognize that there's flexibility with that event to have more attendees at that event, and that is our hope. I'm working with Mr. McDaniel to determine how to incorporate more students into that event, as opposed to other events that we have because we're restricted by numbers. Our hope is to be able to capitalize and have more students participate in that event and recognize their peers as a Homecoming Court. In regards to the Senior Welcome Back Breakfast, we recognize that we put some communication out recently, and we'll acknowledge that, I believe, the 10 through 12 will start on the 16th. So we're looking to hold that event on the morning of the 16th and encourage those students to come on that day, regardless of what group they're in, what instructional group they're in. We're hoping to have that event for all senior students on that morning, and that communication will support that. In regards to some of the other typical homecoming events that we typically see, we still are bound by some restrictions for those. Those are significantly large events. Homecoming dances, we recognize, is a typically attended... Dance, as we recognize, is typically attended by over 1,000 students in the gym. That's something that's hard to plan at this point. We recognize Powder Puff, there is some background work and support in regards to pulling that off. And again, these are not things that are lost on any of us, and these are certainly things that are not off the table. We are certainly agreeable to continue to look at that and being able to implement those at a time when we can. I will suggest that in the very, very near future, in terms of like the next few weeks, that is not a likely event to occur. There is some groundwork that needs to happen in order for an event like that to happen.
Why isn't it happening? It's the same as a football game. Is it girls that can't do it?
Okay, 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 please. Thank you, Dr. Collier, for that. I would ask why you don't think that that can, the Powder Puff. Just can you tell us why? I mean, I know that there's some planning and things that need to go on, and I understand with the Homecoming Court that it's planned and it's going to happen at the soccer game, and that will allow for more attendance. I'm asking what we can do to add to that event. I'm asking what does it take to do the Powder Puff, and is there some way that we can, what do you need? What do you need to make some of these things happen more?
Yeah, I don't think I need anything but time. Okay, so I need time, and obviously we have a staff that is dedicated to support this. We have a variety of adult supervisors that coordinate this. We have student coaches that coordinate this. So it is a process. So time is really time and resources, and those are in high demand at this time with regards to people being pulled in a lot of different directions.
One of the things for clarity, and I'm not sure I stated it with enough emphasis, but the traditional Homecoming Week celebrations, I believe the intent, as it was relayed at the committee meeting, is that there will be a Homecoming Week in the spring. So perhaps Powder Puff, then perhaps all the other things, maybe they're occurring, maybe the plans will be to have them occur during a spring sport so that the kids get the full experience. I mean, that's, I don't know if that's what the lens is, but I did write that down, and I just wanted to make sure that perhaps parents in the community don't think that we're not planning, we're just planning on canceling these. We're actually just talking about possibly deferring them, with the exception that the court, because voting and nominations have taken place virtually, that there'll be some celebration for that being done in the fall, but when the normal sort of activities that you would find would be deferred to a spring event.
Okay, well, and I could almost swallow that, except that what are we going to do in the meantime, though, to try to, the restrictions have been lessened, so we can do some more. Maybe we can't do the whole package until the spring, but we should be able to do some more to engage some more people. I mean, 9/18 is our number right now. So I just, I would like to see us try to do what we can to, we need to bring more of our Springfield spirit and all that. I don't want to see that lost on the Homecoming Court or that plan that has been created. I'm anti-loss tonight, you could say is where I'm at.
I have a question, Colleen, and I could be totally wrong about this, but that seems like planning something that cannot involve all the students because of the number restrictions. Am I understanding you right? I mean, for all the students that would want to attend.
Are you talking about Powder Puff? What are you talking about specifically?
Well, you're saying, if I understood you right, you're talking about Powder Puff or perhaps even more Homecoming activities that could be planned by Dr. Collier and his team, you know, sometime in October. But if we're limited to numbers, who decides what students get to participate and who doesn't?
So it was explained to me, the Homecoming, your mic, Homecoming is, it's not just a senior event. It's a high school celebration, okay? So sometimes, though, because of restrictions, and obviously you know this from different things that have been thrown at us this year, we have to think outside the box. So if we have to do something for the senior group, if we have to do something for the junior group, the sophomore group, the freshman group, if we have to break it up, then we break it up and we do something different. I'm not saying that it has to be exactly the same as it's been, and maybe that traditional event would be what would take place in the spring. What I'm saying is I don't want to lose perspective over the importance of keeping our Springfield community together through this crisis, and there needs to be some celebratory ways of pulling us together. So if we can do a little bit more or a lot more at these events that we have out there, especially now that restrictions have been lessened, I'm all for that. And I'm just asking if that's a possibility.
I hate when we dance around. Ms. Sullivan, you asked a very specific question about Powder Puff. The answer to your question is not all the kids participate in the Powder Puff Bowl. There was, there's a team that's put in for sophomores, freshmen, and seniors. Each team may have, no, each is sophomores, freshmen too, Dr. Collier, or is it just seniors, juniors, I'm sorry, sophomore, juniors, and seniors? No, what is it?
Seniors and juniors.
Seniors and juniors?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not a Powder Puff expert. I mean, I have not used the Powder Puff. So it was a joke. That's the puffy things you, all right. So it's, teams are put in for juniors and seniors. I don't know how many kids are typically on the team, roughly 30, 40?
Yeah, multiple teams.
Yeah, but how many, how many kids are we talking?
I'd say a few hundred participants, yeah.
Okay, so, but it's not every student participates in it.
Mike. Right. That's why my question, I tried to specify it down some, for the numbers, who would want to participate? I would never assume that all students want to participate in everything. That's why, that's why I was asking.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to get the answer to your question. And the answer to your question in this instance, if we're talking about Powder Puff, you have a few hundred kids that participate, and typically it's the girls are playing against the girls, and then the boys have a cheerleading squad. It's like reverse roles. So it's a few hundred kids that want to participate, and then, you know, some parents come and, you know, they kind of use it as fundraising as well for some charity. But I think us hitting 900 for a Powder Puff would probably be possible stretch as far as people coming in and, you know, coming out of the stadium. But, so I just wanted to, I was trying to answer your question.
First of all, 900 is disgustingly wrong. Yes, we certainly will. So let me just continue with the report, and if there's more discussion on this, let's have it at the end of the meeting, perhaps. So in other business, the PAC had met previously and ruled to give, let me say this slowly. The PAC had met previously and ruled to give control of stadiums and facilities back to the school districts. It's like I, Governor Wolf then released, as we all know, a new order providing maximum occupancy rules. And then I'd like to thank, as you did also, Mr. DeBello, Mr. Rizzo sent out a follow-up email the following morning. As the Tuesday night meeting happened at 10 o'clock the following morning is when Governor Wolf put out the new rules, Mr. Rizzo put in a communication out with what the plans were, and I just wanted to thank him for doing that. And then, as I said before, I forwarded it to all of you, so I feel like we did have some good communication going on there. And administration was planning a voucher system, which they enacted, and obviously we heard from Mr. DeBello how things went on Friday. So we had two comments from the public on Zoom towards the end. Dan Collins mentioned turf fields, and then Kate Palladino commented on the marching bands. We adjourned at 8:37. Next meeting is November the 3rd at 6:30? Nope. Next meeting is-
November 4th at 7:30.
That's exactly what I said. Okay. Any other questions?
I got your calendar. Thank you. So Community Relations met after extracurricular at 7:40, not 8:40, and we are switching times the next time we meet on the Wednesday after Election Day. So we're not meeting on Election Day night. We're meeting that Wednesday. We're going to meet at 6:30. You're going to meet at 7:30. In our Community Relations Committee meeting that we did have, we had a very thorough communications update from Ms. Crew with COVID-related updates and how that has rolled out since March. We also had an overview of the communication reach, and I have some stats to create an illustration for all of you. The communication reaches by emails have gone to 1,128 employees, 8,917 families, 7,321 students.
Read that first, 8,917.
8,917. 8,917 families. Would you like me to read it that way?
No, you said 800.
8,917 families. Okay, so in the open rate, the number of those emails that have been open, the open rate has increased from 47 to 54.6%. Messages have also been sent by text, 3,187 messages, and the sign-up rate for that has been up 15%. On the social media platforms, the reach to Facebook users, 9,162; to Instagram users, 5,995; Twitter, 4,687; LinkedIn, 472, for a grand total of over 20,316 users or Springfield community that have been reached through the social media platforms, which is a lot of outreach. And then on top of that, we had a recap from Andrew on RCTV and the exponential growth that's been going on there, over 3,200 YouTube subscribers. That number is way up from, I believe, it was up 750. Is that right, Ms. Crew? Yes, okay. RCTV has been focusing on live streaming. They are averaging 1.7 events daily, for example, 15 events in just only eight days. So there's a lot going on there. And RCTV will be doing Board Table Talk after the October and November meetings, and they will be broadcast on RCTV, and the audio will be pushed out to Ramcast as well. We also talked about some of our next thoughts on this, and potentially there will be a survey after the current surveys close for the commitment piece that we're looking for, which I believe is the 14th. Is that right, Dr. Gooden? The 14th is when that commitment survey closes for 7 to 12. Yes. So at the next meeting on November 4th, which is just two weeks after that, we will discuss with the Community Relations Committee if, in fact, a survey regarding communication will be going out. And that's about it. Any questions?
No, I just want to, I'm sorry. I just want to commend Aaron and her team. I think they do an excellent job. I mean, you know, everybody always thinks, there's never enough communication or communication isn't clear, but I think that for the amount of effort and the communication that has been going out, especially more recently, I think we're trying, and she's trying, and the team's trying the best as possible to get all the information out as fast and in timely manner and as clear as possible. Sometimes, you know, with so much going on, people have questions, and sometimes we don't have answers for those questions, but I just want to applaud their efforts as well because I think they're doing a really great job.
Truly, they are. Those numbers speak for themselves, but we all know too, with the regular contact that we have with the marketing, with Ms. Crew and with Andrew too, that it's just a wonderful job that they're doing. They're communicating very well with us, and if we need to take a closer look at that, they're open to that as well. Okay, so the next piece here is the Western Center, and we did not have an October meeting, so we'd have no report there, other than everything is going well from what I have heard. And then Mr. DeBello, MC IU?
The MC IU meeting met in October. Unfortunately, work does get in the way of school board stuff sometimes, and I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but for the most part, the meeting itself was to take care of the monthly business, as well as it was Dr. George's last meeting as Executive Director at the IU. So he will be, will be leaving. He was instrumental in helping reinvent and reestablish Montgomery County IU in Montgomery County as well within the state, and did such an unbelievable job that, as I mentioned and reported on in the past, when the Harrisburg School District has gone through many years of problems, won't get into details, but at a certain point over almost two years ago or a year and a half ago, I'm not sure exactly when it was, when the state came to Montgomery IU and asked us to take over the managing of the Harrisburg School District and to put a plan in place to put them back on towards the path of success, which we were able to do that very proudly. So through Dr. George's leadership, and the IU Board itself, Montgomery County IU is on the map in the state of Pennsylvania.
Any timeframe for his replacement?
We have, we have the replacement. She's been, it's Dr. Regina, and I'm going to, I don't, what is it?
Speaker.
Speaker?
Speaker.
Yeah, I can never remember her last name. I just know it's Regina. I'm sorry. But she officially, the baton was passed. We hired her about a month or so ago. She's been shadowing Dr. George and has now picked up the baton and will be carrying it forward.
Okay, thank you for that report. Do you also have an update for us on ad hoc?
Yeah, so the ad hoc had the initial meeting, I guess about almost a month ago. Based on that, we, there was a lot of people in attendance through Zoom. We then communicated that we were going to try to put a smaller group in place, a parent group that we could meet with and interact with. We then sent an email out. We got 40 participants that wanted to be part of this ad hoc committee or group. We were ready to move forward when originally, I guess two weeks ago, we were going to send an email to those 40 people and let them know that we were going to meet, because at the time, the governor's mandate was, as we know, overturned by the federal court. And then within a few days, the state came back, so the mandate was put in place. So then we held back and said, okay, now what are we going to do? And then the next thing you know, the governor came back with new capacity issues. So we're going to be back to sending an email, and Mr. Jackson and Ms. Fazini, we're going to find a date, and we're going to invite those 40 people to this ad hoc meeting. So now we can actually get rolling and meet with the parents and start having some open communication. Took a little longer than we would have liked, but we were caught in a merry-go-round of capacity, but I think we're at a point now because we didn't know how we're going to basically eliminate 15 people off of the group of 40, and I really didn't want to do that. So I'm glad it worked out. So we'll be getting something out in the very near future. And Aaron Crew did, again, did an excellent job of putting the questionnaire together, collected all the information, and sent a spreadsheet to the committee as far as who the participants were. So we had, we weren't involved, so I don't want anybody to say we cut anyone out. We had, you know, so we just took that spreadsheet that Ms. Crew created, and they're the people that we're going to be sending an invitation, invite to.
And that includes all respondents to that questionnaire then, correct? No one is being-
No one is being, it's all, everyone that responded to the email that was, or the posting that Ms. Crew put out will be invited.
All right, thank you.
And yes, before somebody asks, the board will be copied on all correspondence and meeting times.
Great.
That is my report.
Just like every other committee.
Yes, just like every other committee.
And the next one we have here is the superintendent evaluation. And the next one we have here is the superintendent evaluation report, which Christina would potentially be giving us an update. Mr. Schaefer and Christina and I did meet on Zoom with Dr. Gooden, and Mr. Rizzo, I believe, was on there also. We did have that first meeting. I've been waiting for an email for when that next meeting was planned. There were some ideas there that I believe everybody was going to follow up on after that first meeting. And have you heard yet about a follow-up meeting to that? I have not seen that.
No, maybe we can ask Ms. Melton when she's with us in two weeks.
Absolutely. I will ask. Okay, and then PSBA liaison, Mr. Schaefer, that's you again.
Yield my time to Dr. Gooden for his report?
Well, before you yield that time, I do have a question. On October eighth, it was fall virtual, PSBA Fall Virtual Advocacy Day. Did anyone have an opportunity at all to tune into any of? That advocacy, okay. Is anyone or everyone registered then for the PSBA Virtual Conference on the fourteenth and fifteenth coming up this week? Okay. Me too. I'm understanding there will be a number of breakout rooms that we can go into and hopefully learn from each other in other districts. There was a registration that I believe Ms. Fern processed. Did you get that? Was Mr. DeBello, did he register for that? I'm going to forward you whatever information I have.
Do you forward it to me too? I didn't get anything.
Okay, I'm going to have to see what I have and forward it down. Okay, Superintendent Report.
This is Alski. I can reach out to PSBA and find out why people are not getting copied. Everyone who responded to me was registered.
That would be great if you could do that. Thank you.
All right, for my report tonight, I'd like to notify the public that the K through six commitment form has closed. We had a total of, we have a total of three thousand six hundred ninety-two K through six students. We have approximately two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven students wanting to return in person. We have approximately one thousand fifty-six students wanting to remain virtual. We have one hundred and eighty-five students in our cyber program from K through six. We're moving to our cyber program. And we have two hundred thirteen unknown. And so, what's happening now, Friday and today, our elementary principals are reaching out to contact those unknowns to discuss with them what they would prefer to do, whether they want to send their children back, or they want to be in a virtual classroom. The elementary principals are also beginning to build their class rosters based upon that information. As far as next steps, we need to, once we get our class rosters built, we need to notify our parents. Our teachers, our Springford area teachers will be back, all will be back on October twenty-sixth. And so, that's where we're at, that's where we're at there. So, we're in the process of making sure all those pieces are in place. So, that's where we're at, but we do need to reach out to those two hundred thirteen students or to students that we've not heard from. So, we need to find out what they're, what they're planning on doing. Also want to let the board know that, and the community know, that our application for our Flexible Instruction Day has indeed been approved. And what that means is that in the future, when we have a snow day, that snow day will be a virtual day. And so, it will count as a school day now that we've gone through this experience of having virtual learning. We can implement that and turn that switch quickly. And so, now we'll have, instead of snow days, we'll have school days from home, as we're doing. So, that's all I have.
Dr. Gooden, can you tell us when we can expect to hear the class sizes? I know you said that the teacher, the principals are working now to create those rosters. And this is one of the things that would interest me to know what we're anticipating the class sizes to be. Do you know when we'd have that information?
Well, as I've said, with our K through six plan, because we're taking existing teachers and pulling them out of the rotation and making them virtual teachers, we will fill up those virtual classes, and the teachers that are remaining will have the, will, you know, have the in-person students. At the elementary level, we really work to not be over twenty-four ever. And at the five-six level, we try to stay under twenty-eight. We've always done that. And so, you know, you're going to have a little bit of, you know, there'll be a little bit of variation in that because you do have some students being peeled off for cyber school, in a cyber program. So, yeah, but as soon as we know that, I'll let the board know.
Dr. Gooden, I received, I'm sure as many of the board members have, questions regarding the hybrid for the K to six. And we voted on that, but is there any other further discussion within the board regarding K to six for a hybrid? And this could go in the board comment, but I'm just putting it out there now.
You're putting this up. Okay, this is something I also wanted to talk about in the board comments. So, we can do it now or during comments?
Do it now. It's on the table. Do it now.
Okay, so according to the recommendations for pre-K to twelve for Pennsylvania Department of Education in determining instructional models, based on the level of community transmission by county, we are at the moderate rate, which means either the full remote learning or the blended learning. The definition according to PDE for blended or hybrid, something we refer to as learning model, is any model in which the number of students in a school building is reduced to allow for social distancing of six feet. And this may be accomplished, it says, in many ways. We were hoping to accomplish this social distancing of six feet by having enough students participate in our virtual program that we could have those class sizes small enough that we would feel comfortable as parents sending our children back, as students who are entering, having some certain amount of level of concern in this, you know, entering a new environment, and our staff knowing that they are, you know, handle, are working with a smaller group of students. Obviously, it looks different. Kindergarten through sixth grade are very different. I'm concerned, and I know we were waiting for the survey results to come back in for that information, which is why I asked Dr. Gooden about that information, but I have also received a lot of emails addressing the concern of not being able to maintain that social distancing of six feet. And so, that's my concern as these numbers come back in with class sizes because we are pulling those teachers, as Dr. Gooden said, to fill the virtual position. So, I would be interested in learning if there were other ways in which we could get those numbers down. So, I said, we have many parents who want to know why we aren't offering the hybrid for the students, and I remember the pros and cons. I mean, having students in there every day, but I know that there are some other things that we could perhaps look at that would keep those numbers down in the classroom. So.
Now, as I've indicated and told the board and the community when I presented this initially, we will not be able to obtain six feet between students. That was, I've said that very clearly. Last week, I actually went and clarified that at the K four level, we can get five feet between students, and at the five, and that's at twenty-four students in a classroom, and we can get four feet if a class has twenty-eight. To go to a hybrid model at the elementary would mean that those students, there's a couple of options. You could have students coming in two days a week and three days a week. They're on Canvas, asynchronous. Or you could have them live streaming out of a classroom, K, one, two, three, four, five, six, which nobody recommends. I don't think a student in first grade can sit and listen to a class, and I don't think a teacher in first grade can manage those two platforms, but that's why we didn't bring that forward. But there's not too many options here. If you, if the, if the board wants to lessen the number of students, there's a couple of options. We would need to hire teachers to backfill those virtual teachers. And that way, you can keep the class size down. Other than that, I'm not sure how else you do it. But I've tried to be as transparent as I possibly can in presenting these plans that at the, I can give them a choice of in-person. I can give them a choice of virtual. I cannot give them a choice of in-person and virtual and six feet. I can get close to it, but I cannot get six feet. I've tried to be as clear and transparent with that as I possibly can. If the board wants six feet, then you need to split the number of elementary students that are attending school. And that, there's, I don't know how else to do that, other than to do it that way, which means that those K through six students would be on Canvas three days a week. They would be in-person two days a week, doing a Monday, Monday, Thursday, and then Tuesday, Friday. And as we originally proposed back in July, that's how you would attain that. That's how you would lessen the number of students in your building by cutting the students in half. To simply say that we're going to give them, and the community has demanded a virtual option, we have given that as an option. But I cannot give six feet. I cannot give virtual. I cannot give, unless we backfill with teachers and hire teachers to do that.
So, if I could just say something, this was something I've struggled a lot with, but I have spoken to over the past two weeks especially, but even the past month, I took a webinar with Harvard Medical about how to bring back students to public schools. And in COVID, I took a class at Johns Hopkins about COVID readiness. And I've talked to a lot of local health experts, just from Montgomery County, but also doctors in the area and some pediatricians. And the things that they were talking about, especially with this elementary school age, K to six, but even K to four specifically, is that you need to mitigate, you need to balance the risks. You need to mitigate the COVID risk, which the biggest thing, number one, is your local transmission levels, masking, social distancing. But they all were very encouraged by the fact that we, K to six, were grouping our students together in sort of these bigger-than-pods, but whatever you want to call them, teaching groups, classrooms, and not moving them around so that you're also mitigating the risk of transmission. And then, once you've gotten that to an acceptable, but not, nothing's going to be zero, but more of an acceptable, acceptable COVID risk, then you have to look at the other risks of this K to six group, especially the younger ones, that virtual learning, unless you have a dedicated teacher, doesn't work for them. And that in-person learning is the better model. Hybrid model is really not such a great educational model for that elementary group and works much better for the seven to twelve. So, they said you have to think about the other things, like the need for childcare, the social risk that the younger kids have, you know, they're developing socially. Whereas if a seventh through twelfth grader misses a year of social development, it's not so important. So, there's all sorts of things that, especially the pediatricians, when I talked to somebody from CHOP, were saying you have to balance these things, and that that's more of an issue. So, not that anything's perfect, but that's, and I think the teachers too came to us saying that the hybrid model was not a good educational model that they supported as much as the one that Dr. Gooden and the Curriculum Department presented.
My point with this is not to take a position of one or the other. It's been asked by parents. So, we have a school district that is doing K through six, all kids in, and then seven to twelve, all kids out. I mean, all kids hybrid. So, it's a valid question.
Absolutely. I'm just trying to explain what experts have told me in the educational field and medical field. Just putting out what I've heard over the past month and especially the last two weeks.
And Ms. Fazini, I respect your opinion on this, and it's not an issue of what's right or wrong. I'm just putting it out there for discussion. As the administration, you know, they've given us their recommendation. But, you know, I'm getting emails after emails about this, so I figure it'll be a worthwhile topic for discussion.
Totally agree.
And I'll add to that, that I also, maybe went a different perspective than Mrs. Fazini did with her research at the medical professional place, but more so with the other area school districts. I know Wissahickin is doing something similar, and in conversations with, that continue with the board leadership in this area with some of the neighboring districts, they're looking to be able to do this because there is less movement at that, at that age group. They are more dependent learners versus seven to twelve, who are more independent learners. So, no model is going to be perfect. No model is going to make everyone happy. But I'll say again that whatever it is that you choose as a family is the right choice for you. And that's, you're just going to have to find comfort in that somewhere as we try to get through this all together. But yes, I've gotten those emails too, and I think it's a very valid discussion that we're having.
So, the trick question is, listen to me very closely. This would work if we hired more teachers? Question mark.
We'd get the six feet if we had more teachers. Is that correct, Dr. Gooden?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think anybody's saying it's not going to work, Mr. Jackson. So, just, we're just saying to achieve the six feet. Right. Let's be clear on the words.
I would, to that. To that.
But I will say that as I've looked beyond Montgomery County at the models that other districts are doing, I am finding that a lot of the districts are indeed bringing their K through six, their elementary students in, and they're splitting the older students as we are doing, and they're live streaming. And so, and they're doing it without incident, without issue.
Because it's going on now, right? I mean, they're not waiting until November. That was another thing I was going to ironically bring up. You know, was there a chance that we might be able to begin sooner than the twelfth?
All right, back to my question, Mr. Schaefer. I appreciate the board's comment on this. As we've been challenged before, we, you know, it's always been said that we don't get along, or whatever the case may be, but I think it's important that we have these questions, we discuss them, we come to a resolution, and we move on.
We, that's why, like, we have a resolution. And I applaud Ms. Fazini for the amount of research that she put into this because I've been saying for how many meetings, there is so much information. And quite honestly, and we heard it from Montgomery County, Springford School District and Montgomery County basically is not moderate. We're in the low to moderate range. And when you look at what low is, we're never going to achieve that in the very near, probably within the next couple of years. It's not achievable. And the, what was put forward by the state with this low, moderate, and substantial is a recommendation. Even the CDC's recommendation is try to achieve six feet as best as possible. There is so much information that's continually coming out. There is articles even this weekend that the service that we're doing to the students for not getting them back in school, there's all kinds of statistics out there. I mean, it's just, it's all over the place. The statistics are out there showing that the, what everyone believed that was going to be the epicenter of the COVID for schools didn't turn out to be true. They're showing that the numbers of infection rate within school districts isn't anywhere near what they anticipated happening. And the number of students that actually, not only they test positive, but actually get sick from the COVID has. get sick from the COVID has so greatly diminished that, that again, these are all the factual information that's out there. And, you know, we, we keep going back to these things. And when I opened up this meeting, when I talked about Governor Wolf's, just for instance, this is what we're dealing, just so the public understands what we're dealing with. Because I want to bring this up, because this is, this is very telling, and this is why it gets frustrating. But with the, with the rule that was put forward, zero to 2,000 people in an outdoor arena, you could bring in 20% capacity. So 20% of 2,000 is 400. If you have 2,001 people, you're allowed to bring in 15%, which means you could now bring in 300 people. So this is what we're dealing with when it comes to all this information and the stuff that's put forward by the state and everywhere else. Even the WHO, the world, not the band, the great rock band, the WHO, but the World Health Organization has recently come out and said that these shutdowns for a solution for COVID is not the way to go. So there is so much evolving information. We made a decision, I think it was an excellent decision based on K through six. We can't be everything to everyone, it's not going to happen. I think that this, what the administration put forward, I think that bringing the students back, we're looking at roughly, if I was, I was trying to write the numbers down quick enough, but it sounded like a 60-40 split between your results and your, and your numbers, right? So you're close to 50-50, so the, actually the classrooms have, are reduced down. I think all of the safety protocols that we're going to put in place with the students staying in the rooms, I think Dr. Gooden did an excellent job of specifying how the specials aren't going to, the kids aren't going to travel to the specials, we're going to bring the specials to the kids. I think all of that in place, how we're going to handle the lunch, lunch room, the lunch services, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure we could do a mu, any better job than what we present. I think it's an excellent plan. We have to get moving forward. I wish, everyone knows my position, I wish we would have did seven through 12 as well. And I agree with Mr. Schaefer, that's for a conversation to be held later, I guess. But we, we have a solid plan in place, I think it's a safe plan. I think we're moving in the right direction and we have, there's so many other problems. And again, this information's all out there. Read about the, the, the adverse effects that we're having on our students by not having them in school. And actually, the list is pretty exhaustive. I was even surprised when I actually, when I was reading through the list. Dental care even was becoming an issue because school districts that provide that dental care for, for students in, in, within their district. So there's, there's just so many adverse effects. We have to get these kids back to school. I think we're trying to provide an ultimate solution, I think we've come very close to that. Is every parent going to be happy? Absolutely not. But I think you guys have done an excellent job, K through six, as far as having a strategy in place.
And I have no argument with bringing students back to school. I'm 100% behind that we need to bring students back to school. And I think as far as reading the information, like many of us, we spend a lot of time reading the numbers, reading the data, reading the reports, I don't, I, I don't question that. I am, I don't think anyone could argue that I believe that academics are very important, that if we don't have students reading on grade level, by third grade, their chances of graduating from high school are severely diminished. So I think in elementary school in particular, it is very important that we get these students back and learning. That doesn't mean that we don't continually look to see if there's something we can do to change and improve the situation. This is constantly evolving. So you're talking about, we're talking about the number of students per classroom with teachers. And teachers are, have the greatest impact on student achievement. That is, again, a data fact. And if we're talking about, you know, 24 and a K through four and 28 and a five, six building, that in itself is, are not small class sizes. And what we've asked our teachers to do is on top of teaching, to also monitor the behavior, who's wearing their mask, who's social distancing, trying to catch kids up, teach them new routines. If we can find a way to get those class sizes smaller, then I think that that's something we need to be, continue to be innovative and creative and look at. If that means that we could bring in other teachers to backfill, I'm not even sure what qualified teachers are out there. But I think these are all things that we need to consider. There are different ways to do this, other than just, you know, we're not bringing them back, or we're going to just go completely virtual. So I would be open to any other considerations as we see these numbers come in, if we're looking at class sizes of 24 to 28, if there's ways we can bring that number down.
We've got to be careful with numbers, because I don't recall ever approving that we're going to exceed our existing class size numbers as of today. Is that, are we, are we going to exceed those numbers, Dr. Gooden?
Not for in-person.
I didn't think so. So let's, let's be, what, what, we don't know at this point what the class sizes are going to look like, but they're not going to exceed.
Yeah.
Or 28, is what he said, they were not to exceed those numbers.
I think Maggie's saying she'd like to get those, I'm sorry, Dr. Wright is saying she'd like to get those well under the 28 or 24 to potentially allow for the social distancing that so many people have asked about. Whether that's feasible or not, I'm not sure. And I think Mr. DeBello is right when he says we have to look at the actual numbers. Whether we can backfill, I, I don't know if that pool of teachers would be there either. But with some of these unknowns, there's unknowns on our side and there's unknowns on the family's side. I hope that we gave enough information to make the most informed decision that was right for each family at this point.
I think that we made the right decision for the K through six. And I think the idea of trying to do a hybrid mix is logistically impossible, was there's not some secret dormitory of teachers sitting out there waiting to be hired, where are these teachers all going to be coming from to, to backfill? I, I don't see where that happens.
Madam President, I recommend that we move forward with the agenda. And we can come back to Mr. Schaefer's point regarding potentially starting the seven through 12 prior to 11:12.
Okay. Is there any other information, Dr. Gooden, that you wanted to share in your report?
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have a solicitor's report for us this evening?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you.
Why not? You have to have something, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Quit while, quit while we're ahead at this point.
That's good enough for me. Minutes A and B, any questions or comments? Personnel A through F, questions or comments?
Based on the dynamics that we're dealing with right now, when, this nurse, Amy Bonner, I assume we have a replacement for her?
Mrs. Lee is.
Sorry, Mrs. Lee.
We've posted the position, we're starting the interviews, and we do have a substitute nurse lined up to cover that building.
Thank you.
Okay, finance A through F, any questions or comments?
Let me just make sure I have the right agenda, where these are at, because I just want to make sure that. Yeah, sorry. I just want to make sure that within this agenda item, sorry, some of the monies that we talked about is starting to come through related to the CARES Act. Yeah, it's coming through the IU, the $413,000 and the $1.5 million. E and F.
All right then, board comment. I have a board comment. So we had talked about a few times, and there's a little bit of back and forth about this, but potentially doing a board retreat. I'm not going to spend or, or ask Dr. Gooden to spend that money to bring in a facilitator to do a retreat unless we're all in. So maybe now's not the right time for that, and maybe there will be a time for that down the road. I do however, think that we do need to debrief. We've been through a tragedy as a group in terms of this whole pandemic, and I do think we need an opportunity to debrief. So please watch your email for an invite for a board breakfast on that same day, on November 7th, in the bar. Thank you. That's my only board comment.
Madam President, I respect you dearly, and I just don't think that this is the place to discuss that, if we're going to have it. I think we have it. If not, I don't, I don't think four hours is going to change anybody's mind about anything. I think this board is great, it's, you know.
We're not meeting for four hours. We're going to, we're not meeting for three hours.
Or eight hours.
Okay, I, I was thinking an hour or two, just to debrief. And share some food as a meal, and that's it. If you want to come, come. If you don't, you don't, don't feel obligated.
This is the place to have that discussion.
That's fine, that's fine. It was under board comment. It's in lieu of the board retreat on which I'm not going to ask to spend those dollars when they need to be spent elsewhere for other.
No, I concur, we shouldn't be spending money on this. I mean, everybody's a well-educated adult at this table. And I don't know, I don't think one hour.
That's fine.
Two hours, three hours, it's going to make a difference.
Okay, that's fine. Now we're going to move on. Is there any other board comment?
Yes. Last week, this board voted 72 to purchase $100,000 worth of microphones prior to the administration and the SFEA, going back and coming up with a, a direction that we're going to move forward with. And one of the questions I had back then wasn't answered, and I'm asking again, again, is that microphone necessary for the approach that we're taking now? It's $100,000.
I believe it was up to $100,000.
Or, okay, make it $50,000, I don't care.
Could be $5, though.
It could be $5. But, but the point is, it's not going to be $5, so let's not sit here and kid ourselves. My question is, I asked if a beta test was done with the teachers prior to buying this equipment.
I believe it was, I believe it was. And I also did ask Dr. Gooden twice for his presentations.
It was not.
Maybe he wasn't able to get that, but I.
Madam President, my question was not answered last week, so.
Was a test done? Can you answer his question now?
Was a test done with the teachers? Because keep in mind, Madam President, this was prior to the administration going back and reconfiguring the approach. Okay? So at that point in time, nothing had taken place. So my.
So what's the question today?
It's the same question today that was last week.
Okay, what, what is the question?
Was there a beta test done with the teachers? And how has this been implemented at this point in time?
As far as, Kelly, Dr. Murray, I know that we did it with the, with the, we did a test with the microphone. Teachers are not going to be able to move around the classroom unless they have a microphone. They, it, I mean, we're looking at live streaming out of the classroom. If they don't have a microphone, they're, they're going to have to sit right behind their computer and, and teach.
Well, this is not an acquisition, it's just a question I asked.
I know, that's what I'm.
At the last meeting, I'm trying to get an answer now, because this board voted 72 to go spend $100,000 to go buy microphones.
So yes, teachers did test it. I also tested it myself and created a video. I tested it with my mask on, I tested it walking around my office. One of the challenges with being able to do the model is if you step away from the direct, directly in front of your laptop, then the sound quality is going to really diminish. So I do believe that that microphone is necessary so that a teacher can stand within that window of where the laptop is going to pick them up visually, so that the students at home could hear them.
That's not my question. Thank you, Ms. DeBello. My second question is, are teachers going out, this is a trick question, the teachers are going out to buy cameras? Are you sure?
I mean, I can't, I can't speak for every teacher, they should be.
We talked about buying camera, we, we talked about using the iPad for cameras. So I'm just trying to confirm that teachers are not going out to buy cameras to make this process work. Because we talked about this three weeks ago, doing extracurriculum, what, Mr., I mean, not curriculum, technology. And you presented, sorry, you presented a cheat sheet of what cameras were available and the timeframes. And I was concerned about taking that information, presenting it to the teachers, getting their buy-in, and then presenting it back to the board. So it is my understanding that teachers are buying cameras to make this work. So I'm trying to confirm that.
I'm not aware of that. I'm not saying it's not happening, but I'm, I am not aware of that, and that's not something we've asked them to do.
Okay.
We, when we evaluated the cameras, we came up with another solution, which was to use the iPads instead, because we had them and we didn't, it wouldn't require an additional purchase. So we felt that we were able to use the iPads to serve as the camera in this environment, so we wouldn't have to go out and make another purchase.
So we were able to find that quantity of cameras, or, I'm sorry, that, that quantity of iPads to address the issue with cameras?
So Bob Catalano could speak to this more, but my understanding is that we had iPads which were set to be recycled, that they were pulled out of the classroom because they're set to be recycled, and we can reuse them for this purpose, and that there wouldn't be any issue with using it for the camera for that purpose.
Also, some information that I, I'm not sure where I had gotten this from, quite honestly, but my understanding is with the microphone, it takes them out of the five-foot box, so to speak. And that some of the teachers are even considering being very creative, thinking outside the box with those iPads, and putting them on lazy Susan's in front of the classroom or towards the middle of the classroom to be able to have that go with them when they move around the classroom with their students. So.
That's not my question.
I understand it's not your question, but your question was answered, and this is added information.
My question was not answered. Don't tell me my question was answered.
Then please be direct, Mr. Jackson. Ask your direct question.
Madam President, with all due respect, I am one of the most direct people you're going to ever meet.
Not hearing a direct, direct question. If it's not being answered, or Dr. Murray, if you're not understanding what Mr. Jackson is saying, as I am certainly not, then ask him to please rephrase.
So I, I wasn't in the impression I answered it, but if you can please rephrase it, so I can make sure I answer it for you.
Are teachers going out buying cameras?
They have not been directed to buy any cameras. I don't know if they're going out and buying any cameras on their own volition, but we have not directed them to or anything else. We have the solution. I'm not sure what exactly you're questioning.
If, if that's your answer, please stick behind that.
Well, I, I feel like I'm being, you know something that I don't know.
Dr. Gooden, I'm asking a simple question. It's all I'm asking. So if, if the answer is, we have not directed teachers to buy any cameras, and teachers are not buying cameras, then that's your position. But my concern is, we talked about this weeks ago, about cameras. And my concern was, if we need cameras, let's buy the cameras. That's my only point here.
Clinton, I feel like you've been answered by two people, so.
Well, I disagree with you, Ms. Fazini, but I respect that.
I mean, and what more, I'm, I'm not understanding what more you want, other than they've answered your question. What else do you want to guarantee, or?
I'm not, Ms. Fazini, with all due respect, I'm not looking for a guarantee. If the position is, teachers aren't buying cameras, then that's your position.
If they're buying them on their own volition, that would be their choice. But Dr. Murray and Dr. Gooden have very clearly stated that there has been no directive from the district to go and buy a computer.
I didn't ask if there was a.
A camera.
Didn't ask if there was a directive. I asked if teachers are buying cameras, because if, yes, you would, you would know if teachers are buying cameras.
Well, you think that they follow them around and see what stores they go to and what they're purchasing? How would you possibly know?
If they're not using iPads, Ms. Early.
Earl.
Earl. If you're not using iPads, that means teachers have bought cameras.
It does not mean that. It, you, it implies that, does not mean that.
Implies?
Our Chromebooks also have cameras on it, so they're probably using the cameras that are on there as well. So it would either be the iPad or their Chromebooks.
Okay. I will, I'll wait till the next meeting, we'll talk about this again. All right, grab, everybody, let's just all take a big, deep breath. Let's just relax, take a deep breath. There's a lot of stress. I get it.
There is no stress.
Well, some people are in distress. I know I am.
This is common sense.
Well, that's, and, and so, so I have a, where'd she go? Oh, there you are. No, you could, oh. Sorry, I didn't see you scoot. So from what I heard, just as a recap, that we have purchased microphones for teachers, right? Or we're going, or we're in the process of purchasing microphones for teachers to be used in the classroom, correct?
Yes.
Right. So then the other question is, is that in lieu of cameras in the short term, and this is where I, I struggled last week and I, and I struggled this week with some of the answers that, that was put forward. The iPad camera is not a solution for providing live streaming in the classroom. The iPad camera, the way I understand it, is a short-term stopgap until we can figure out if and how many cameras we are going to need in the classrooms. I, for one, cannot support an iPad camera solution because that will require a teacher to either prop it up on a desk and sit there or carry it around like they're walking around the room getting selfies like this. This isn't an iPad, this is an iPhone. But same concept, right? This is, this is, this is what our stopgap solution was, which in the short term would be fine, but, um, you know, I was curious myself because Daniel Boone, we got information from what Daniel Boone School District is doing. And I did some research and I went out and I looked and the camera that they're using, Lenovo cameras, or however you say that, is a camera with speakers actually that they're setting up in the classrooms on, on top of the smartboards. Or they're setting them up in the back of the room shooting forward. Whoops. But, and a teacher would be presenting in view of the camera. And then I actually contacted them to find out, do they have cameras in stock? And they said, yes, we do. So stuff is available and I'm, I just, I'm, I'm just, I, I, we got to the iPad as a stopgap, but then, and I'm still waiting. I didn't support last week the decision that was made because I didn't support the plan because I didn't like the plan as far as what we're moving forward with. And I was very open about that. I still don't like the plan. I could have got on board from a hybrid standpoint for a very short period of time, but we don't have, we're not setting up the proper technology in the classroom for the teachers to be successful with the kids that are going to be live streaming. And, um, and again, the stopgap iPad solution was fine if we were going to get the kids back in school quickly, but in the meantime, we should still, I, I would figure that we're still exploring camera options for having in the classroom for live streaming. If that's not true, then, then, then I really getting heartache. Right? So are we still exploring the purchasing of cameras for classrooms or are we, our goal is just to use the iPad as our end-all-be-all solution for live streaming?
Our plan was to use the iPad, but if you'd like us to bring those, those cameras to you for a motion, we will.
I'm not saying that it has to be motion-driven cameras. I'm saying that there's, there's different options available. I looked at just one camera. It wasn't motion-driven, but it was.
She means bring, bring it to you as a motion for the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't, I, it's hard with, you know, that you're all the way down there.
How about Technology Committee next week?
Yeah, that's.
Why would they bring it to us if everything is work?
Hold on, hold on, folks. Please stop.
No, Dr. Gooden, please, because I started this conversation. So my conversation, all due respect, Dr. Gooden, I'm, I'm sorry, but to back to Ms. Fazini's point, if everything is fine, why would they need to bring something to us?
Let's let them have a discussion about it at Curriculum and Technology.
I think it's not whether things are fine or not. I think that teachers are trying to create, they want to get back in the classroom, they want to use any tools that they have available to them. And depending upon the subject and what they can best do for that subject, for those students, for the virtual students, they want to use anything and everything that they can creatively make use of. And it depends on the teacher and the subject. So possibly some teachers want a live stream, some might want to do recorded or mixture. They want to use Canvas. They want to use asynchronous. They want to use synchronous. They want to do everything that they can and teach as to the best of their abilities. We want to let the teachers teach. So the best thing is for the teachers to decide which teachers think this might be a useful tool for them. And then that's something that the Curriculum Department or the teachers come to us and say, we need to purchase these. I think that's the process, not us directing.
But Ms. Fazini, with all due respect, when, when we talked about this in technology, I was very clear, back to Ms. Earl's point, very clear. Tell us what you need. They gave us a, a sheet of cameras of related items to pricing and the time.
But at that time, we were discussing the educational model, just hear me out for a minute, that was a teacher fully teaching a classroom and virtually teaching at the same time. To your point, that was the educational model being discussed at that point. It has shifted to hybrid, which is a different beast.
I think the other piece is here too, Mr. Jackson, is that oftentimes you do not vote in favor of an expenditure when you do not think that that money is being wisely spent, which I do not discount your opinion in that area. But how could you justify spending the kind of money that I believe was, was in that meeting? I can't recall those numbers right now, for something that would be temporary, when perhaps we should be discussing, as Mr. Schaefer brought up earlier, if there may or may not be adjustment to the schedule. I mean, are you going to want to spend that kind of money even if we were to go all the way to February 1? I don't see that happening. So this has gone off the rails and with all due respect, I frankly think that we need to move on from this discussion. If you want to continue to discuss the cameras or the technology in Curriculum and Technology and have that committee bring to us a recommendation at the next meeting, then so be it. Otherwise, I, I'm not sure that there's any more that needs to be said at the table here on this subject.
Well, guess what? I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask more questions about cameras because I think you're going way beyond your role here this evening. I asked a specific question. I'm not questioning what the teachers and the iPad has the short-term gap. All I asked was, are we still, which I didn't get an answer to the question, are we still? Well, I did, I guess I did. Then you said no. But if you'd like for me, you, you will, and that's not what I'm saying. I'm trying to get my arms around, what are we doing? What is our goal educationally? I'm looking at what other school districts are doing. Other school districts are able to live. I don't accept, I'm sorry, but I don't accept where teachers will be given the opportunity or the options to continually do asynchronous learning across the board. That's, I don't accept that. I don't accept that there, what is the model that we're putting? We, we said we're going to do hybrid. And then, and this is why I voted no, because the one week we were told that the, the whole virtual learning concept would not work. Then we, the following week, we voted to send the kids back to hybrid, which will be more kids virtually. And now we're trying to impose different type of virtual learning models for whatever the soup of the day is. And I struggle with the whole concept. So what is the plan? Because sitting here saying that one teacher's going to do this, one teacher's going to do that, some are going to livestream, some are not going to do Canvas, some are going to record, that is not, I, I'm sorry.
But from the beginning, you keep saying that, let the teachers teach.
Let the teachers teach their curriculum. We, as a board, need to set directive of what our expectations are in the classrooms. And my expectation in the classroom is that I don't care if the kid's sitting in the chair or if the kid's sitting on a computer screen at home, they get the same educational value that they deserve. And they're not getting it. And now I'm starting to get aggravated because I agree with Mr. Schaefer that the way we're moving, we should seriously look at what we can do sooner than later. Because again, I'm reading these articles, the impact that we're having on our students is so dramatic that in two, three, four years from now, we're going to look back and say, man, did we screw up? And we've got to do something now. So doesn't it make sense to move forward and look at additional options for cameras or not? That's what I want to hear from administration. If we're, if we're saying that holding an iPad, walking around in the classroom is a fine example of our educational value here at Springfield, then I struggle with that.
Tom, nobody's saying that.
No. What you need to understand is what, what is being done with the iPad. The iPad in the teacher's hand allows that teacher to see every student that's accessing that classroom virtually. The microphone allows that teacher to move around the building and to be able to speak and the students at home to be able to hear. So if the student raises their hand online, then the teacher is able to answer that because it's right there in front of them. A camera is static. A camera is static.
Your Lenovo cam.
I'm sorry. Dr. Gooden, what camera in the classroom is being used? That, what static camera in the classroom is being?
There is no static camera in the classroom.
Right. The camera is the iPad.
Listen, if you folks, if, if you want us to put cameras in the, in the classrooms, we can, but it's not the option. We, we're trying to balance here. We don't want to, you know, you don't want to be in a situation where you're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on a short-term solution.
I just asked a simple question 20 minutes ago. That's all.
So, so then we have to have a cameraman in, in each room? Because if, hell, is a camera any better than an iPad if you don't have a cameraman.
So if I recall correctly from the curriculum meeting, we were looking at the cost of the cameras. It was a very high cost. And I think that it was a matter of, is, is this really what we need? If it is, you know, but, but one of the concerns that had been expressed that it, it is, we're hoping that this is temporary, this hybrid, that we're going to bring these students back. And I recall one, I believe it was one of you that said that we're going to invest in all this technology and now we're not, and then we're going to not, it's going to become obsolete soon after that, hopefully, right? But I, if we want to revisit it, I think that's a great idea. I mean, to, because I think we're always evolving and looking again, we're going, maybe this is something that we need to revisit that could improve. Maybe teachers, not every teacher wants them or, or not. But I don't think it's a matter of whether we made the decision that they weren't to have them. I think the administration was trying to be innovative also because they recognize how much money is going. That the Bluetooth headphones were more important to them than the cameras. But if now we want to have them revisit the cameras, I'm all in favor of revisiting this.
I guess I asked a simple question.
Well, do you like cream and sugar in your coffee for that breakfast that we're going to have?
It's just a simple question, not complicated.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think that they should, we should look at all tools. I just think it needs to be, these outlays and these investigations need to be led by the experts, not a couple parents and not necessarily just the school board members. I think that the teachers and the curriculum department and the experts in the field should be leading these creative efforts.
I guess I asked a simple question, Ms. Fazini. That's all it was.
You keep repeating yourself over there, Clinton.
No, it's a very simple question. Is that a simple question?
Are there any other board comments?
Yeah, I want to make a motion that we, we bring the kids back from hybrid January 4th, since it's, we're talking about a short-term fix.
Is this a part of board discussion when, when a motion's put before? Because I think.
No, those questions are comments, so go ahead.
I, I think that this is, you know, to come, to bring this up at the very end of the board meeting, I had not even, I don't even know what day of the week, June, January 4th is. And I apologize because I'll get hit for that with, you know, you should know what you're doing. But I think this, that, that's a very important decision to make and not one that I think that should come at the end of a work session during board comment. I need input from administrators, et cetera.
It's a very simple question. It's very simple.
I agree with Dr. Ray.
We're making everything so complicated.
Can I ask you a clarifying question for the motion? So is that, can we add to the motion to bring the elementary back any sooner than 11-12?
No, we cannot get the elementary students in sooner than what we're planning. There's a lot of work to be done. I can tell the board a little story here if you'd like me to, but there's a lot of work to be done. And considering the fact that most of the board members have never done the work that you're asking us to do, there's a lot of work to be done. We cannot bring in the elementary sooner than what we're doing. We may be able to look at the elementary or, excuse me, the secondary and try to get them in sooner than November, the November date. That's why I went back there to talk to Mr. Mur, Ms. Murray about, or Dr. Murray about. But the elementary is, is pretty well set. We, we need that time for our people to be able to build those courses or build those class rosters.
Did you say 7 through 12 could come back before the November date or you're talking before the February date?
No, we, we, that's why I went back to talk to Dr. Murray to see if we could indeed begin, try to bring in our 7 through 12 students earlier than the November 12th date.
So Dr. Gooden, for the record, and I respect your opinion and, and your expertise in education. So there's no way, as far as where you see it, and I respect your position on this, that we consider bringing the kids in before then? And your, your answer's your answer. That's no pressure. I just want everyone to be very clear on that, as from an administrative perspective.
Well, not, not elementary. I, we need the time for elementary, but as I was saying, we may be able to bring our secondary in sooner. Our teachers are coming back on the 26th. I'll go back and try to see if we can press that Gantt chart that we're working off of, that we've dropped, dropped our projects into and see if we can pull that back and see if we can get secondary in sooner than, than we had anticipated. And we'll give it, I'll challenge my team to, to try to do that. And I'll be able to give the board and the community an update on that shortly.
So, sir. Based on the information, I'm going to withdraw my motion this evening. I just did that for, because I'm, I'm frustrated. But what I'd like to have on next week's agenda in two weeks is what it would look like to bring the students to 7 through 12th grade back full-time after the winter break on January 4th, which is a Monday, I believe. And what it would look like for us to continue to investigate additional camera options because we're not, in my humble opinion, we're not going to be able to go from hybrid to students in school with live streaming or some type of live streaming to no live streaming in the third quarter. I think that live streaming is going to be some type of option through the rest of the 2020, 21 school year. And we can't have teachers walking around the classroom holding an iPad as their camera option. So I understand what you're saying, Dr. Gooden, but also part, because Mr. Catalano specifically told me after Curriculum that I, using the iPad as a camera could possibly be an option. And that's how I know that it's not just looking at the students that are tied into Zoom, but the students have to be able to see the teacher and see what's going on in the classroom as well. So I, I want to put, I would encourage that there's an agenda item next, next week to specifically talk about those two items.
Actually, three, because also if you have an update on bringing in 7 to 12 before 11-16 or 11-12.
I, I just respectfully want to say that I feel like they are working so hard to get things going. And we keep piling on, sort of do it faster, do it faster. And I just think sometimes we should let them focus on getting people in on the timeframe that they say they can do it.
Ms. Fazini, we're just asking questions. That's all. It's not a directive.
I'm allowed, I'm allowed to speak too, though, right?
It's just a question, that's all.
I guess with response to you.
Well, but you're giving directives for them to also do work and come back to us with plans.
Actually, what I said was I would hope that it's on the agenda for next week. I didn't give a directive. I said, I hope, I withdrew my motion and I said, I would like to see on the agenda next week that conversation be held about the returning of students on January 4th and also the additional conversation around the further investigation of cameras in the classroom. I think that we should have those. I think that we should have those conversations, and I respect everyone's opinion, but quite honestly, I'm, we're a school board. Our directive is to govern and lead the district. It is not to sit here and say, well, if administration says it, then we got to, that's it. It's our responsibility as a board to challenge, to ask questions, to drive and and make appropriate decisions with the administration. And if we don't agree on certain directives at certain points in time, it's our responsibility to ask the questions, and that's what I'm doing. I'm asking questions. I'm not giving a directive, and I'm not saying we will do this. I want to know, what would it look like and what does it take?
I agree, but if you agree with what the administration or the school district is doing, it's also your responsibility to speak up and say that, too. And I'm sharing, worrying, coming from also.
Thank you, Ms. Fazini.
Any other board comment? Okay, we're going to go on to public to be heard. Three minutes, we have no cap, but if it goes beyond an hour, then we'll address that. We'll make sure to balance between people in the room and the people on Zoom. So we'll start with a half an hour in here and go from there.
Oh, I do respect, Madam President. How many people are on Zoom? I'm sorry.
Ms. Crowe, how many people are on the Zoom or have their hands raised?
Three.
Only three hands raised, so we're okay. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak to the board?
Dave Fazini, 147 Gateshead Way. I find it very frustrating for the past several months to watch these board meetings and watch the men on this board condescend to the women and waste everybody's time, both in here and on Zoom. Mr. DiBello, you should be ashamed of yourself. That's absolutely ridiculous, the way you act and the time you waste for the administration. Dr. Gooden and his staff have worked their butts off, and the only reason we're not back in school is because you continually wanted to go back full, and you left the hybrid off the survey. That's why we're not back. And then, after we vote to go back, you all of a sudden want to start it all over again. Just let them do their job. Support them. It's not that difficult. Thank you.
Ms. Fazini, there is no decision that's made here without a majority of the board, so it's not one person. So if a decision is made, it is a majority of the board, one or the other. Yeah, I specifically have never.
I get that, but here's the thing. The three of you, Mr. Schaefer, he's on his computer and his phone every meeting, the whole meeting, and he never gets that attributed to him. Mr. Olson accuses the women. You three are the problem on this board, and until you get on board and support each other, you won't even go to breakfast with the board. Clinton, it's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Tom, you sit there and you are so condescending to every woman on this board, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of watching it, and I wish you would stop it. You're a bully.
If you would like to talk after this meeting, I'm right here. Okay.
Let's move on to the next comment. No, 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 no.
I know, I know, we're going to take it, we're just going to take it down a level right now because we're going to take it down a level, and we're going to go on with public comments, please. Thank you.
Well, interesting to follow up to that. Kim Anderson, 123 Patriot Drive, Collegeville. I want to start by saying thank you to Ms. Sisowski for bringing up the importance of the extracurricular activities. We hear many of you know what group we're involved in are perfectly willing to help. I said I would volunteer with Powderpuff. I don't have high school students. I didn't have them, and I volunteered for the tailgate. We have so many parents that are willing to help. Whereas, what is the parent group? Create it. I don't know what this parent group is, but we will all join it, and we will let you know of our availability and our willingness to help. Secondly, it was a little scary tonight for me being here because I'm mostly here to support my friends who are parents in the seven through 12. My kids are third and sixth, so this is not an issue with me about the hybrid model, until tonight, when it sounded like it was being threatened. So that was a little scary. So thank you to the board members who spoke up tonight about the importance of our age group being back in school. My third grader is suffering miserably with this model, this virtual. I have to be in the room with him at all times. I feel like a prisoner in my house. We've talked about Wednesdays, that is now TGIW. Thank God, it's Wednesday. Okay, so to let you know what Wednesdays are like, that's when we're all breathing and feel that we can actually escape our homes, get some stuff done. So if that's going to tell you what Wednesdays are like, our kids are done early, and then they're doing whatever they want. So the biggest fear I'm seeing from my seven to 12 friends is they're going to have three Wednesdays, and I don't blame them. What I'm hearing is that they're going to use a lot of digital media. That's not the same. It's not the same. If they're getting a lot of live instruction now, and it's going to be decreased under that hybrid model, we have taken a gigantic step backwards. I feel that vote was a mistake. Mistakes can be corrected. Really need to listen to everybody and what they're talking about. Third, am I at my limit? 17 seconds, I've seen a lot of comments on Facebook in a variety of groups. I just want to point out in case somewhere on where our school district area numbers are actually quite good. We have had zero deaths in Springfield, Limerick, Royersford. We have 54 in Upper Providence, about 52 were Park House nursing home. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in in the room at this point? All right, then we're going to move over to Zoom. And, Mr. Catalano, do we have any hands raised?
We've got six. First up is John Y. John, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Yes, thank you. John Janchuk, 12 Edmonds Drive, Royersford. Yeah, as a scientist in real life, unlike most of the board and most of the people that are commenting at the board meetings, I'm severely disappointed with the behavior and actions of the board over the last six months, and especially tonight. Specifically, the Springfield area school district and its board approved plans that explicitly state, quote, "Schools may provide in-person instruction only in accordance with PDE guidance," or I'm sorry, Pennsylvania Department of Education guidance. PDE guidance states that for full in-person learning cases are under 10 per 100,000, no matter what Mr. DiBello thinks of that guidance, and test positivity must be below 5%. Guidance also defines a blended model as, quote, "Any model which, in which the number of students in a school building is reduced to allow for social distancing of six feet." Currently, Montgomery County is recording 38 cases per 100,000 residents and a 2.5% positivity rate, which fails to meet PDE guidance for full in-person learning. Presentations and emails around the K-6 plan also state that the distance in the various buildings will be four to five feet as a goal only, with none meeting the six feet in guidance, thus failing to meet the definition of blended in the guidance. So I challenge the board tonight and the administration to square this circle. You aren't meeting the benchmark for full in-person guidance, and you also don't meet the definition of a blended model. You are not following your own approved plans that are the official plans of the school district. Why would any parent trust any word any of you say about anything else? What was the point of you writing all those plans? It has been clear since the board voted to open in virtual that the one and only goal of some, most notably Mr. DiBello and Mr. Jackson, was to bring our kids into the buildings no matter what. They won't follow the best advice to public health experts, and they pay only lip service to the safety of our children. You spend more time arguing about the sports, the sports tickets, board meeting attendance, and the Powderpuff game than actual education. You are rude and dismissive to the health experts and the women on this board. The infamous Parents Back in School Council that claims to speak for all viewpoints does not even mention safety in their mission statement on Facebook. It's time to end this charade and accept that full in-person school is not a realistic goal for this school year. I urge the board to stop being bullied by its loudest members and do what's right and protect our kids by following science, public health, and focus on the hybrid plan or virtual learning.
Thank you, we're three minutes.
Next up is Mary Jo McNamara. Mary, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please. You need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Hey, it's Mary Jo McNamara, 187 Abbey Drive, Royersford, Pennsylvania. I just have a couple of comments. One is that I also would like to volunteer for the assistance in getting the Powderpuff game off the ground. As a working parent, I'm happy to volunteer and help out in whatever way we can. For the K through six comments that were done tonight, the numbers that I heard were approximately 60, 40, maybe 66, 33%. In a general rule, if the class sizes are usually 24 to 28, if you peel off 33% of that of going virtual, then you're down to numbers that can support six feet. So just not looking at it class by class, just overall, general, you are supporting six feet. So for those parents or those people that aren't getting that, and maybe I don't get it, but that's what I see in a straight number, right? For the seventh through 12 stuff, I have a very difficult time, and I don't know how any parent is making any commitment in the commitment survey. If you cannot tell me what is the committed level of live streaming if I choose 100% virtual for my student? What is the commitment for live streaming from the teachers for 100% virtual? I'm not even going near whether or not a teacher wants to decide for people that are in the hybrid model, for those students, if they're in the hybrid model, whether they decide to pre-record or asynchronous or synchronous, I'm not even going to touch that. If I want my kid home 100% of the time in virtual, what is the commitment from the administration for what live streaming they have? Answer that question. I cannot submit my commitment survey without that question being answered. Excuse me. As far as direction from the from the board, Dr. Gooden, for going to look at cameras or directions to take something else, the administration or the experts, right? They should be bringing it to curriculum. That's what the board members are saying. I applaud Mr. Jackson and Mr. DiBello for representing the concerns of a parent group. That's all it is, it's concerns, just like other parents groups have concerns. I am truly considering bringing my child virtual because we can't get our act together as a district of what our hybrid model looks like. A physics teacher can, a calculus teacher cannot teach and hold an iPad in their hand and walk around a classroom and write an equation on the board and see all the students livestream. That is impossible. Get motion cameras mounted in the back of the classrooms. God forbid, they may have to livestream for a day. Let the teachers teach means the teacher's available. If my student has a question on a virtual day, and that teacher isn't doing live streaming, when is my student?
Okay, thank you, we're three minutes.
Next up is Kristy Ward. Kristy, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please. Please unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Kristy Ward. I'm at 534 Quincy Street in Collegeville. I am calling in to comment on the comment made by Mrs. Fazini. I quote, "If a seventh to 12th grader misses a year of social development, that's not that big of a deal," unquote. This is a very insensitive comment to be made by someone sitting on the school district board. Multiple studies have been reported that there is a major mental health crisis right now for high school age students dealing with COVID and school closure, as well as I have sat through many weeks of public comment, listening to multiple parents calling in regarding the health and mental effects to their own children who are students. Anxiety, depression, and sadly suicides are all increased across the country in this age group. It is a huge deal to miss a year of social development as a seventh to 12th grader, huge. You really should look at that comment and reevaluate. You spoke about all the doctors you spoke to and your online training that you took. Maybe I could suggest that maybe you go back and ask that specific question to the doctors you spoke to regarding the consequences of missing a year of school, and I am sure they will tell you that older kids are suffering and how detrimental it is for older children to miss a year of social development. Kids are suffering, and for you to make that insensitive comment is unacceptable. It is not acceptable for any grade to miss your social development, let alone grade seven to 12. Thank you.
Next up is Gabrielle Deardor. Gabrielle, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Gabrielle Deardor, 704 Collin Court. I just want to applaud Mr. Fazini and Mr. Janchuk for your comments tonight because it's what I want to scream through this thing every single Monday. I've had enough of the disrespect, yes, of the women and of the people that aren't in this little crew. As you know, Mr. Schaefer mentioned, there's 439 students participating in fall sports. Last I checked, there were 8,000 students in the school district. Yet you waste hour after hour after hour of everyone's time talking about football and your football tickets. Look, I was a cheerleader in high school. I played, you know, I cheered for Ron Bane. Football's important to high school, yes, but what's important is getting these kids back to school. And I may not be on the back in school council, which I'm sick of their bullying, and I'm using the word, I'm so sorry, of this whole situation. Listen to the administration, listen to the scientists, and get the kids back to school and stop, you know, pushing your political agendas, conspiracy theories, and your own personal gains. Thank you.
Next up is Joy Crowell. Joy, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hi, this is Joy Crowell, 5 Linden Way, Collegeville, PA, 19426. Wow. So I had stuff written down, and I'm not even going to read what I wrote. First of all, I can't even believe that people would talk that way about Clinton and Tom saying that they are talking down to women. Just because they ask the hard questions, the good questions, and the questions that need to be answered, does not mean they are talking down to anybody. They happen to be the only two that are listening to us, and they are listening to the scientists, and they are listening to the safety features, and they are listening to the concerns to get our kids back in school, but nobody seems to be listening. I, I am so offended that you have even said that about either of them. It makes me sick, I'm disgusted, and stop using the word bullying. I'm so sick of the word bullying. Everybody says that, bully this, bully that, bully this, bully that. If you can't ask and listen and answer the hard questions, it's not called bullying. Enough already. Move on. Get our kids back in school, five days a week. Look at this hybrid plan, people. Wake up. It's ridiculous. The kids are getting less face-to-face time than they did as it is now. See it. Ask about it. Ask the questions. You won't get any answers. Clinton and Tom are the only ones that ask the questions at this board, and nobody wants to answer. When, when's it going to be time that we have a town meeting so we can stand up, ask a question, and get an answer? It's ridiculous. I'm done.
Next up is Lynn. Lynn, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hi, my name's Samantha Favaccia. I'm at 25 South Wall Street in Spring City, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Fazini for refusing to be steamrolled and for speaking up for the great majority of the parents that just want people to listen to reason. And you should have, you should listen to that scientist that spoke before. Thanks, that's all.
Next up is Jacob. Jacob, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please. You need to unmute yourself. Next up is Rachel Kirchner. Rachel, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please. Rachel, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hi, my name's Rachel Kirchner. I live at 263 River Crest Drive in Phoenix, PA. Number one, I want to say if anybody should be ashamed in this room, it's Mrs. Fazini for saying that any year of a child's social development being lost is not that big of a deal. I really hope that that's not what you meant and that you will restate what you or her true intention was with that comment. Number two, everybody's talking about why are we rushing the administration? I'm pretty sure that you've known since June to put some plans in place, so I don't know if the time crunch is anything except self-imposed because of poor planning. I, number three, I take it as a personal insult as a woman that because somebody is speaking to you in a direct way and asking for an answer, that that should be any different than if you were speaking to a man or anybody else. Everybody that's on that board is a grown adult, and if you can be bullied by anybody, not that that's happening, you shouldn't be on the board. And everybody there is, is perfectly capable of standing up and speaking their mind and defending their opinion, and that's the entire point. And I don't want the woman-man thing being thrown around anymore. This is 2020. We have a woman running for vice presidency, so it's not, it's not about gender. It's about ability, so let's just keep that clear. And then the last thing I have to say is that as board members, it's your job to be representing the majority or representing your constituents. And I find it very, very hard to understand how you voted a plan into place, and you don't know the actual number of parents who support what. I don't think that any vote should have taken place until you sent out a survey that had full, in-person, hybrid, and virtual as choices so that you had legitimate empirical data to base your decision on. Thank you.
Next up is Corey Parsia. Corey, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please. You need to unmute yourself. Next up is Chrissy Pergine. Chrissy, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
My name is Chrissy Pergine, 203 Bayberry Drive, Limerick, PA. Obviously, PA. I wanted to say, as Dr. Gooden, why we, why the elementary kids cannot go back until the end, until mid-November. A month ago, I asked this question, and the response was, "It's just a stake in the sand. It can be moved. It can be moved." I don't see it being moved. It's more like it's a stake in the cement. It's not getting moved. I am thankful that he finally looked to see what other districts are doing. So thank you for that. You, Dr. Gooden, you also mentioned about there'll be no more snow days. If there's a snow day, the kids will learn virtually. How are the teachers going to prepare for that? Like if they don't call school till five o'clock in the morning, are they going to be able to prepare for that? It seems as though we need Wednesdays off for teachers to prepare for the week. So I'm just wondering how they're going to prepare for that day. And Mr. Fazini, you ought to be embarrassed to talk like that. And if that's Mrs. Fazini's husband that's on the board, she ought to be embarrassed too. Nobody is bullying anyone, and I'd like to thank Tom DiBello and Clint for all the work you're doing to get these kids back to school. Thanks.
Next up is Sarah. Sarah, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hello, Sarah D'Norris at 3 Buckley Circle in Royersford. It came up tonight that hiring more teachers could help to solve the problem of in-person class sizes of twenty-four students. With class sizes this large, it won't be possible to offer appropriate social distancing, and I think that's what you're hearing, frustration from many parents. Even though there's thirty percent of students approximately choosing to remain virtual in K through six for the second marking period, those students will require their share of the teachers, which leaves the class sizes in person still around twenty-four. Please consider this idea seriously, although it is unlikely that there will be teachers available to hire at this time. As Dr. Gooden stated, you can't have in-person learning and virtual learning and social distancing. In order to get all three, you need more teachers. Please plan to allow for as many layers of protection as possible, including social distancing and math. I'd also like to state that I appreciate Dr. Gooden stating that it's not possible to speed up the process of getting K through six open any sooner than the date that's already been set in November. Please recognize the huge amount of work the administrators and teachers are doing to make these plans become reality. Please don't give them more and more directives to change and revise plans. This constant back and forth is why our return is so delayed to begin with.
Next up is Jacob. Jacob, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please. You need to unmute yourself. There you go.
My name is Dr. Jacob Erickson. I'm an emergency medicine physician. I've kind of offered my services up to the board many times. You know, I work at a very large tertiary center in an urban area, and they're all going back to school. We should be back to school. All right, we're in a suburban area. Our tertiary center has zero hospitalized pediatric cases. Zero. We should be back to school. The virtual isn't working. All right, my teachers are saying that we are getting less than about one-fifth of what they would normally teach our children. One-fifth. They're not getting the adequate education they deserve. The AAP recommends full in-person learning. All the school districts around us are going back, and they're successful. And they're also able to do all the other virtual options with it.
Next up is Corey Parsia. Corey, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hi, thank you. Corey Parsia, 1 Woodmont Court in Schwengesville. First off again, I'd like to thank the board for all your hard work. I know this isn't easy, but kudos to you guys. Thank you very much. With that being said, just a couple of things I'd like to share. Number one, I'd like to talk about the asynchronous day on Wednesdays. And, you know, as a parent, you know, I, I have concerns that first, why is there a need for an asynchronous day? And if there is a need for an asynchronous day, I question why it's on Wednesday, and here's why. Because I feel as if my children gain some momentum when they learn Monday and Tuesday, and then we're kind of off. And we know that asynchronous is not like real live instruction. And then we go Thursday, Friday, and then we're off. First off, I question the need for asynchronous learning. And we continue a regular school day on a Wednesday so kids get as much education as possible. And if asynchronous day is needed, why can't it be moved to a Friday where the kids can garner four consecutive days of coherent instruction, establish momentum, have time to digest it that extra day if needed, and then start fresh on Monday? I honestly don't care about the day bells, the, the cycle of days, one through six. Again, these are different times now. That's the first thing. Second thing I'd like to say in regards to assessments. You know, I find it frustrating, but it's understandable. There's one thing you guys need to understand. These kids aren't getting legitimate tests that they need to study for, you know, and be held accountable for. And while the teachers are doing a phenomenal job teaching, and we're doing our best using these cameras, another key component is kids learning how to study, kids learning how to be resilient, deal with small little failures because they don't understand something on a test and to improve. So that's another big component that's missing. I know you can't control that, but please take that into account. We got to be able to give these kids some legitimate test grades so we can adequately, adequately monitor their progress, make sure we're fulfilling those needs so they can move on to the next grade accordingly. Again, I just wanted to give you guys some feedback. Thank you very much for your time. I know it's not easy. You guys are volunteering and are doing a great job. Thank you. Have a good night.
Next up is Heather Staley. Heather, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hi, it's Heather Staley, 412 New Street, Spring City, Pennsylvania. I too would like to thank Dr. Erickson for his comments because I agree that virtual's not working. I've been seeing a lot more with other students that I've seen and other parents I've talked to who are having the same problems with social and emotional issues. The kids are just missing a lot of things. I also agree with the last speaker that they're just getting that momentum, and then they stop dead on a Wednesday, and then you have to force them again on a Thursday to try and get it. My daughter was always a great kid in school, an A learner, and always was excited to go to school, and she's lost that. And I feel like a lot of people have lost that. We can go back safely. I also want to make sure that other people realize that those are guidelines from the Department of Education in Pennsylvania. Guidelines, not rules. We do the best that we can. COVID-19 is going to be here like the flu, like H1N1. We're going to have to learn to deal with it, and there is no way to escape no one getting the disease. We have to understand that. As far as some of the other comments, I feel that if someone is related to someone on the board, they shouldn't be speaking. I think they were a little too emotional and that they should understand that I would think your wife is more than capable of defending herself. Everyone on the board is an adult, and everyone on the board has a voice. The other part of it that I'd like to speak to is people saying about bullying. It's not bullying. It's parents saying, "Hey, look, this isn't working for my kid. Let's do better." So why don't we all agree tonight to do better? Thank you.
Next up is Annie. Annie, first and last name, full address, and your public comment, please.
Hi, Annie Schlifter, 311 Walnut Street, Spring City. My first comment wanted, I wanted to speak of was about a lot of things that I disagreed with. I had to do some breathing exercises before I got on this, on this call. I think I'm calmed down now. Here's the thing. I keep hearing a lot of, "We need to get the kids back to school. We need to get the kids back to school. We need to get the kids back to school." I am completely all for that if that's for you and your family. I think attacking the board members as people are commenting is, you know, you're calling the board members ridiculous, disgusting, you know, all of these things because of them disagreeing and maybe getting a little loud. But then you have parents calling in that are screaming at you. It doesn't make that any better of a situation. I think everybody's going to do what they need to do as, you know, what they feel is right for their family. I respect, you know, friends of mine who want to send their kids, and they respect me as a parent that doesn't want to send their kids. So I think you guys are doing everything that you need to be doing. I was a little, I was a little disappointed with the, you know, the talk about, you know, sports, sports tickets, you know, this, that, and the other. I get that, you know, all the kids want to be social and do their sports and things like that, but I think the education piece is the first and most important at this point. I also wanted to mention that I, you know, I speak at every meeting, obviously, but I had, you know, asked about the ad hoc meeting that I nominated myself and, you know, my very good friend Samantha DiMarcello, which she did know about that nomination. I, we didn't receive an email, so I was, I wanted to question that as well. Again, this isn't an easy decision, and as much as I wanted to get on this call and scream because I'm just so frustrated, as many parents are, you know, a little less screaming from the, the commentators that are calling in. Again, we all disagree. So thank you, everybody. I mean, keep pushing, keep doing the hard work. I appreciate it. I know a lot of other people appreciate it, and that's all I have. Thanks.
There are no more hands raised this time. Thank you.
Okay, that will conclude our time with the Zoom callers, but I believe that Mr. Olson is back up to the mic for this portion of public comment. Mr. Olson?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I want to address the Back in School Council. We were formed for one reason, and that was to ensure that everybody within the school district was given a choice as to what was best for their family, and we expected Springfield to be able to provide those solutions that gave everybody a choice. It's not our job to figure out what the safety plan is. That's the job of the administration. Our job was to hold the board and the administrator accountable to make sure that they provided what our children needed, whether it's my kids or your kids or anybody else. If the option exists that works for you, that's what we were after. So for anybody out there saying, "We're bullying this person," or "We want this," or "We're not for safety," or anything along those lines, yeah, you better look in the mirror and figure out what it is that you're all about because all you're telling me is you don't want me to have a choice. I want everybody, including all my friends and their families, to have the choice to send their kid to school if they want to or stay home if they choose that for safety reasons. It's up to the board and the administration to make those plans happen. We're Springfield. We have the ability to do it. Second, you know, we're becoming the District of Kent. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can have football games and soccer games and powder puff games and send our kids, kids to school. That's what we do. We have the ability to do it. The powder puff game is a microcosm. Couple of weeks ago, Mr. Jackson asked Mr. Miscavige, "What do you need to be able to televise classes?" And Mr. Miscavige said, "We need everything." Well, guess what? Make a list. Let's figure it out. We can do it. Powder puff game, what does it need? Time and resources. What are they? Let's figure it out. Let's stop throwing our hands up in the air and saying we can't do it. Methactin's doing it. PV's doing it. Why can't we do it? We can. Everyone's yelling at each other. Everyone's trying to come up with something better to say to, over everybody else. We need choices. We need execution. We need answers. We can do it, so let's start doing it. I consider the Back in School Council a failure. We failed to engage with the administration, the board, or the teachers. None of them spoke to us. Where are we? We're not back in school. November 12th is eight months. That's a long time, unprecedented in the history of American public school. The kids are out of school for eight months. I see people texting on their phones right now while I'm talking. They can't do it. I wish you were here so you could see who's on their phone, ignoring my comments. They're the same people that are representing you.
Okay, we're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Just for the record, on my phone, I'm, I'm keeping time. I don't know. I'm just, I, because I just want to show that all I'm doing is I'm running the time, so I don't know. I'm sorry.
Madam President, gavel, please. No, no.
Guys, we're not going to do this or you're going to be asked to leave. I think Mr. Lebinski has, and I'm probably not saying that right, but I should be able to since my end is in ski also. Anyway, go ahead. Just making note. Anyway, go ahead.
Michael Lebinski, 2005 Willwood Drive, Royersford. I really can't imagine why we don't listen to the scientists. In the 1970s, they predicted an ice age coming. In 2000, it was sea level rise. For COVID, 2.2 million deaths, hospitals overrun. College, colleges are supposed to be an outbreak. So can't imagine why we don't, don't listen to scientists. The gentleman spoke before, Mary Jo, as usual, leaving out important information. I think Dr. Gooden has said several times that the PDE, first of all, the guidelines, I think, as a couple of people pointed out, left out an important phrase there. It says, "Where feasible." And I think Dr. Gooden and his team have done a great job of trying to maintain the maximum feasibility possible there. How do we know that the scientists have been wrong? Because other school districts are doing this safely. Other colleges, universities are doing this safely. The physician who spoke, who has firsthand experience in a hospital, zero hospitalizations and deaths. So we know it's a realistic goal because we've, we've been there. And the last thing is, there was talk earlier about the PDE guidelines, and again, as usual, the important parts are left out. Springfield has been in the low end of the moderate range for some time, and Mr. DeBello's absolutely right. The threshold is way too low with the, with the testing being what it is with the cycle threshold. We'll never be at five per 100,000 per seven days in this district. Never. But we have been in the low end of that range in about, in the low thirties for several, several weeks, and that band goes from 10 to 100. So we're in the very low end of that range. So that matches perfectly with the level of feasibility. And the, the more important measure is really positivity rate, which, again, the person who spoke about that failed to mention that. We've been in the very, very low end of the low positivity range, which is 3.15 as of today, and the low range is zero to five. So we just need to tell the full story, not only the side of the story that supports your narrative. Thank you. your narrative. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I believe that ends the public comments, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We're going to do a session.
Meeting adjourned, and we will go into executive session back in the Hurt Learning Center.